Welcome everyone to the October fifth twenty twenty three. Honestly, only go one on the agenda. But on these asked for us. And we can make motion to wave the reading.
So I would, I guess before we start. An attorney in my law firm represents the seller to this transaction. So I don't know anything about transaction, but I think it's best that I accuse myself.
Okay.
From this here.
Okay, Liz, are you online?
I am here.
All right, well, I need you tonight.
Procedurally, just so that everybody knows with Brian, you stepping back, which is totally fine. And with Liz participating remotely, we've got to just do roll call votes for everything. And so if just with Liz being here. Mr. Chairman, if you could just do maybe a roll call of those present at the meeting and just if everybody, if we go through, can just say I just for the record.
Um, I.
Liz.
I.
I.
Perfect, we're good to go.
Alright, so I'll look at you.
Good.
Motion to wave the reading.
Second.
No, you don't make a motion.
Oh, sorry. That's right. You can't.
Can I make more?
A motion to wave the reading.
One second.
Okay.
All the favor.
Hi.
Perfect.
Hi.
Thank you, Liz.
And just a quick point of clarification too, is we will have our associate member stepping into, obviously since Brian stepped away, so. And that's fine because it's a special permit. So, okay.
Sure, good.
Yeah, we're good.
Um, is anyone here for? Is it fine, both?
Is the applicant present?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come right up.
Oh, come on, okay. Where do I need to sit?
You can come right here. That would be great.
Just for the matter of record, who's taking it?
Uh, John General.
I want you to give us a brief synopsis of what you're looking to do here.
Sure. So I've entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Christie Massey, who I see is on the, on the call. So she's the current owner of the building, a proposed owner of the building, condition of sale is a few things, but one of them being a special permit for the use that I'm attending. So I'm really looking for two primary things. One is the ability to store automobiles and boats inside the building. I have an old Mustang that I restored and a race car and I thought I got a place to put him so my wife can park the car in the garage. And also just as a kind of a passive source of income. Uh, renting it out to people to store their vehicles. Uh, and then also just for general warehouse. Um, so I work for and run a company in Forge Park called Hamilton Storage. And we currently lease out space and I could use this space at a lower cost to store primarily empty boxes, so empty crates. Um, for trade shows and things like that. So that's the primary goal. I also have two kids that go to Tri County and that's why I added the contractor. Bay or contractor use. Um, so that when they get to the point where they are running a business, hopefully someday that I could allow them to park their service van out front and keep any inventory inside the building. So that's, that's kind of it. Not super exciting.
Now that my question, I'm gonna hold off right now.
Sure.
Right?
So on the property, listen, it just had this one building on the property? Correct. That's what the zone resident. Correct. So before it's been operating as just kind of a warehouse? No, so it was a wood shop or way, way back when. And then in the seventies, Chris's parents uh, got a special permit to turn it into a distribution warehouse. So they ran a business LG products out of that. And Christie, feel free to jump in anytime if I make a mistake. Um, but yeah, so they ran that business for quite a long time. Uh, and now the building's hers and she's not planning to continue that business and is selling it. And I guess for that, because it looks like to me, one of the, the main things that looked like it might be most impactful would be the street, right? Because it has that one street and then it looks like the other houses. Yeah, so the street's an interesting thing. I did a little digging with the town, talked to Public Works. So originally, the street was the driveway for LG products. At some point in time, somebody allowed houses to be built on that driveway. So now it becomes a private road. And as far as I can tell, there's no road association with that. Um, so theoretically, a, a private road should have a road association and that's how the road is cared for. Uh, we did that at our camp in Maine. That's why I know this. Who retakes the road then? Do you know Tim?
Well, so the town, I think the town has in the past, the town does follow the, the street, or they have?
They, they have last year.
Yeah.
Previous years, it has been independent.
Okay, so, so the, um, the, it's a driveway first of all.
Right.
And it's owned by, uh, Elman, the Massies, okay? Um, how they got permits to build houses on there, I don't know.
I thought it was.
Right, there's nothing recorded on it.
That's not, not as far as my research is getting.
We haven't found anything, but the town has stated they don't want to take, that's why it was in such disrepair. They've never, I don't know if the town has ever patched that.
A lot, so it was a, but they have. The owner of the last house on the road before they sold it, they, they threw some tar on top of it, made it look pretty.
They have plowed it. Um, so in that regard, as far as the, um, the status of that. How that happened, I have no idea. It was before my time. Um, it just happened, you know, through it, maybe it was done before, um. I don't know how old some of the houses there, if they were.
I think the building predated.
Eighty sixty-two, those houses? Yes. And so it's, it predated.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, um.
I, I was, I was under the impression that the homes were there before the building was.
Because the, I don't know, the last home was pretty. Anybody in the last home?
That was rebuilt.
Oh, it was rebuilt. I was gonna say, that looks really new.
Um, so, um, yeah, so I guess, um, as far as the legality of, uh, right away for these people that live on that road and that's, you know, that's a civil issue, you know, between well, the, you know, person in the Massies, you know, for a right to pass or repass, you know, I, I don't know, um. I, I, I thought there was something in place because I don't know how people get mortgages on, um, non-conforming property with no frontage.
Yes.
So, but that's another, that's a whole other.
Yeah, my, my concern is more, I guess, like what you anticipate with that. So my use is, my use is no retail hours, so it's almost no traffic. It's my appointment only.
Yeah, okay. So can I just remind the board, uh, so this was in front of us a year and a half ago.
Very similar, yeah. Not me. Was this one, then, also had, um, stormwater issues too, was that?
Well, so, yeah, it's before, yeah, it was before stormwater, but it's in, it is in the flood zone. You know, it, it's very low there and there's the river and I, I don't know how often it, I'm sure at some point it does get.
The street definitely gets.
It does get rid of. Uh, but, um.
So according to Christie, she said the building has never gotten waterized either.
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, but, uh, so, so there was an applicant in front of you, um, a year ago. And, um, they were looking to, um, they were looking to store vehicles, kind of the same idea.
Um, so this is not the same applicant?
No, no, no.
Somebody else personally that went ahead.
They, they ended up withdrawing. Um, I remember the applicant, I don't, the applicant's attorney came here. But I don't think the applicant ever did show, there was a couple of meetings, you had, you held a couple of meetings, um, and your questioning was what are you thinking for hours? Um, what kind of, um, you were concerned about people being able to come and go and still pulling their cars out whenever they want, which would disturb the residential nature. I think that was your concern from the original get-go. Um, so you, uh, you had put it on the applicant to come up with some hours and to let you know and, uh, come back with a business plan kind of thing. And the hours that you thought you, you, you would like to operate and then you, you were going to consider it. And then I think he withdrew. I don't think he came back.
That's my, my understanding is that there was a bunch of questions. He wasn't here. A lawyer was here who didn't have any answers and then that was, that was it.
I think most of it.
Yes, that's correct. That's, um, Christie Massey speaking.
Good, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so, um, so, uh, that, that, that buyer went away, I guess, and, um, this, this gentleman did come to see me, he came to see Amy, um, and, you know, asked the right questions and here we are now. And, um, I didn't know exactly what his business plan was going to be, but he's aware that he, that's why he's here and to explain to you what he was wanting to do and maybe if you can, uh, explain to the board what hours maybe you're thinking for my public hours or is this just?
My standpoint is it's basically appointment only, so there's no retail component to it. So I'm, no one's going there without me there. Really, um, the only thing that, the only thing I struggle with hours, I guess, is, you know, like me, I, everybody else here works right during the day. So if someone wants to drop off a vehicle, it might be at six o'clock at night, you know, they might drive down and drop it off and meet them there and I let them in, I park the car and we close the door and we both leave. Um, because I'm not planning on having, you know, any retail hours. The only other thing I had on the application was the, um, the building does have an office. And so I thought, you know, if the need arose to rent it out to an accountant that wanted to have an office space not in their house. Um, that would be the only, I'll say maybe more consistent use of it, but I don't. That's not really the plan. Um, it's just something that came into my mind as I was meeting with, um, a friend of mine, just a contractor, we walked through the building and he's like, wow, you know, it's got an office and you're not going to use it, so maybe somebody else could. Um, but my, again, my plan is mainly storage.
And, and, and I'll be honest, I'm going to go, go back and, as I'm a stranger, funny, that's the same.
Usually, it, it is interesting.
That said, um, we had to deal with a small residential area.
Agreed.
And people coming in on Saturdays and Sundays with their campers and.
Campers, I'm not doing campers.
No, I don't. Fix vehicle?
Yes, just cars, yeah. Cars and, and maybe small loads. But then what's going to go in there?
And so why don't you explain to the board, uh, how, how big the warehouse is and how many vehicles you can fit in it, I guess.
So I actually haven't calculated how many vehicles. It's nine thousand square feet. Um, so, I mean, you could probably put twenty or thirty vehicles in it comfortably. You know, um, if we went double layers, you could go more. Uh, but again, I, I don't know what the, really the mix is, uh, whether it's going to be, how much is going to be just, uh, general warehousing of, of, like I said, overflow from the business I run now, um, versus vehicles. And the whole, the whole thing to kick this off really was I like cars and I have two of them and my wife wants back in the garage. And so, and I can't build anything else on my property and rent them. So, um, that was kind of what spurred me to go out and start looking for, uh, another opportunity. And this came up that fits the bill if, from a, at least from my viewpoint, a special, special permit, it's there's no deliveries, there's no tractor trailers, there's no retail hours, there's, there's none of that from a neighborhood perspective. Um, you know, the other thing is I, I'm an engineer by education and, and by trade. Um, so I, I tend to take care of things and, and that's one of the things I, I want to improve the property, um, because it is decaying a little bit. Uh, so that is one thing that I plan on doing over the next few years is improving it.
Okay, so I'm just going to continue.
Yeah, sure.
I was under the pressure for watercraft. Um, concern for the weekend times, people coming and going and um, most, most people that have these cars, some of them are very nice and quiet and far and then some of them are Chevy three fifties that are kind of loud, coming up and down the street.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I can't, I can't control that aspect of it. Um, but I mean, again, I, I would expect that if people are delivering it, a lot of times they'll be on trailers. So they'll be delivering a car on a trailer, uh, or they'll have their, somebody else meeting them there, so they drop the car off. But I don't expect this to be, um, a garage. It's, it's not intended to be a garage. Um, I, I'll give you a good example. I've got a sixty-six Mustang that I restored and I drive that about once every two weeks. Realistically, um, because it's, well, this summer's been raining, but so if, if those kind of people are storing a car there, it's not their daily car. They're not going to show up there in the morning, take it, go somewhere with it, return it. They're going to pick it up on Thursday to go to Bass Pro and then maybe bring it back on Friday or on the weekend.
Or also mid-late of the weekend.
Probably, oh yeah, absolutely. I, I, I'm not going to, there definitely will be time during the weekend, yeah. To make it easy. Um.
I'll go with that. Okay. Liz, any thoughts?
Um, yeah, so I live around the corner on, on Deer Run, so I know the Pine Grove area very well. I mean, I, I think, a, as most people in the area know, Pine Grove is used as a cut through for people to avoid the lights kind of on Brenham Road and over near CBS. So I, I just think, yeah, we, we do need to, you know, be cognizant of that. And I just found the application, there seems to be a, a little bit too much ambiguity for me, like you're using it for storage. You might rent the office, maybe in five years, your kids will use it as like a plumbing business. So I think there needs to be maybe a little bit more, uh, boundaries around what the usage is. So I don't know if we can put into the special permit if we do grant it. Like if you want this to be an HVAC business, in five years, you have to come back and
That's fine.
view it, that, that kind of thing. Um, and, and obviously with the, the river being back there, you know, there's a lot of animals, there's deer, coyotes, all sorts of things. So just taking that into consideration, um, when, you know, operating a, a business back there. Well, I guess there's been one there, but, um, those were, those were my sort of three concerns.
Sure, uh, Liz, I, I don't disagree with you because I read this, it's like the special permit has to be granted for a use, not a possible use and not a possible use. I don't disagree with you at all.
Good point. So the two, the two primary uses that I have would be storage of vehicles and the warehousing. Overload for my business. Um.
Vehicles, biopathmas, rentables?
Yep, already on it.
Yeah.
Um.
So, yeah, so we're here because, um, it's a change of use and, okay, it's a pre-existing non-conforming. Um, the, so I don't know about the multiple use thing, but I mean, so you're saying vehicle storage is the most important?
Uh, it's really a tie, I'm going to say it's a tie, because I have no idea if I can fill that warehouse with vehicles.
Okay, so, uh, you can have an office element, you know, that's fine, but when you, when you say, you know, creating three different uses, uh, you know, that's something that you, what's going to want hours, you know, more particulars on stuff, you know, and, and like Liz said, you know, more of an exact description of really what you're going for here.
Okay.
You know?
But, I, I mean, and I'll be honest with you, when I first read the application the other day, I was like, you are just throwing it out there with, I got all these ideas.
Yep, that was, that was kind of the initial goal.
So we can give us much firmer for, hey?
Sure, okay.
I, um, maybe I'll say.
You got a point then?
Um, I think my concern with this is, I tend to agree, and obviously I'm not a voting member, but, um, I really believe that when we look at the residential nature of where this property is and where, you know, right now you have said that there's going to be trailers coming in, dropping off vehicles and people storing. So obviously you're probably getting money to have these things be stored.
Oh, it's, it's a business, it's not, it's not shared.
And so I think we need to be crystal clear that this is a business. And unless your business has a business plan of exactly what's going to be in there, hours and what exactly you're doing.
Sure.
Um, I just think we need to be cognizant of exactly what you're doing. And, you know, I would hope that maybe, you know, you could come up with a business plan, exactly what your business is, so that we know what's going to be in there, when it's going to be in there, because we do have to preserve the residential aspect of this neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think that's just a concern that I would have.
So, so originally when you came in, I, I think I explained that to you, you know, just come with, um, exactly what you want to do.
Yeah.
When you want to do it. That was the criteria that the last applicant.
Yeah.
You know, just so it's clear and a decision can be written to, you know, either, um, agree to what you're presenting or in a junk, having the board adjust, you know, what they think would be.
I mean, because, I don't mean to cut you off, but and, and sitting here as a board member and I'm only one of, more of us here tonight to vote. Um, I don't know if we plan to store, you got two cars here or thirty cars there? And, and because I don't, I don't understand what you're trying to do.
Sure, sure.
You know, if there's fifty cars there, you know, God help it if ten of them want to come in at nine o'clock Sunday morning to take the cars off the day.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's going to be a detriment to the residents.
What kind of a question?
We got it.
Uh, just, uh, one last question.
Sure.
What, because you said you walked through at the contractor front. Do you have any proposed alterations to the building or is that more? The only thing for planning is cosmetic. So there's no, there's no plan, uh, uh, alterations to the footprint of the building by. Same, but right, no. Yeah, so like if you look at the roof, the roof is going to need to be replaced. The, the front skin is all, you know, kind of smashed in from years of use. Um, so that stuff's going to be freshened up over, over time. Um, there's, there's sprinkler work that needs to be done for my use. There's, uh, just due diligence that I have to go beyond the special permit part of it. Right, just to be able to store vehicles and then the building needs alteration. Uh, and so I'm in the process of trying to figure that piece of it out too. Uh, because it may not be financially feasible. This is one piece of the puzzle. The rest of it is, if it's hundreds of thousands of dollars to make changes. I'll, you know, I'm not interested in it.
I think those pieces need to be figured out because when we write this decision, it has to know those pieces. Because I, and you know, maybe the board disagrees with it and obviously I'm not a voting member, but I think we need to know those pieces because those are really important because the special permit you know, is for that site and
Correct.
you know, again, if it was in a business one or another area, that this is in a residential zone. And so those those criteria of what you want to do there, it's really important for the residents that are living within that residential zone. And so, um, you know, but I think it's also important to hear what the public has to say because they're.
Yeah, we're going to get there in a second, but also for my fellow board members, um, we, I deal with a non-conforming use, um, and for myself at least, like when it was last occupied, what was the man?
So, uh, uh, is business going on today?
Business is going on today. I have proof of it that Christie.
It's, uh, yeah, it's up to the applicant to, you know, to provide proof that, um, you know, invoices are still being written.
I have a year, you know.
That's what the board has asked for before.
Yeah.
I think you remember Governor Rabb, we had the same situation, um, where, um, the, it's incumbent upon the applicant to just to, you know, provide some information that, um, that shows that it has been still in use.
I gotta, just to be honest with you, last year when we came out, well, I had no idea where the road was. I drove down, looked at it, yeah. Um, it looked pretty abandoned at that point, a year ago.
It's not the same, it's not the same rate of business that her parents ran, but it is still in use.
But, um, you know, putting that aside, he is coming for a special permit, a change of use no matter what. So, I mean, whether it was, you know, uh, the business has stopped or not, it, it's a change of use.
Okay.
And so, I, I mean, if we stay on that, if you're prepared tonight to, if you have a business, you know, if you.
I haven't written down the details like that. I don't know, that was a discussion, because there might be, if I write down something, it might be just.
If you're prepared tonight to make a commitment, they could take it under advisement or the, whatever the board wants to move forward. But the more information you can provide, if you're not ready.
Yeah.
I, I guess they could continue.
I, I think the easiest thing to do is the, the existing special permit contains hours. Uh, it contains normal weekday hours. Um, I would ask to extend those. Because they end it by a clock and I don't even get out of work.
The hours of the existing business?
Correct.
And what are the hours of the existing business?
If it's eight to five during the week and nine to one on Saturdays.
With no Sunday usage.
With no Sunday usage. I think before you didn't, you, you didn't want any switches as well.
I mean, if I was to order a car down there. I may want to go out Sunday afternoon, August day or Fourth of July, I think, oh my God.
Well, and, and in that regard, because it is appointment only and this isn't going to be a free for all with, with people just showing up, the only people that have access is me. Um, you know, that's something where somebody wanted their car out, it's like, come get it on Friday. Come get it Saturday morning, you know, and
Mm-hmm.
keep it the driveway until you want to use it Sunday, right? That's, that's a decision that people, if they choose to store their vehicle with me, that they would happen.
So with that being said, on the existing hours, what did you have?
Um, the only thing I'd want to extend is probably till six thirty or seven during the week, so that I can get out of work and meet somebody there. And this wouldn't be an everyday thing, um, but yeah, I would, I wouldn't want to be breaking rules if I had to meet somebody there at six thirty. Um, and that's, well, are the hours currently stated? I wouldn't. And, and I, I want to be fair to the neighbors. I, I want to be a good neighbor. I don't want to be somebody, somebody down in the case. Um, you know, this is, that's not my intent at all.
So you would be okay with eight to six thirty, nine to one on Saturday and no Sunday, the holidays?
Yeah, I mean, but. Now, with those hours, you know, I guess the only question is, does that prohibit me from personally being there or, or having people drop things off?
No, it's just conducting business.
It's just conducting.
You can occupy your building.
Okay, I, I didn't know what those, how would, yeah, no, yeah.
But I think if Tim and I don't know if you'll agree, but I think though he's going to have a, like you had said something about an office. That's also something like, I just think we need to really make sure that you're indicating exactly what you're going to be doing there. If you're having an office there, that's another thing, that's a, it's a whole different thing. So, you know, again, I think the board needs to know exactly what are the losses that we're going to have? Are we having a business with an office? Are you having, you know, just we need to know that when we write that decision. So that
Sure.
we know exactly what you're, you're doing there. Just because if it's an office and we need to know, just to know.
Yeah.
It's going to be an office, it's going to be this, whatever those are. So I, you know.
I mean, I can use it just as an office for what I'm doing, right? That's no problem because it's already there, right?
It would be a whole, whole occupation.
You would just, well, uh, so it would be, you could have an office for the business as you're coming.
Yeah, in front of.
But not a separate rent. No, no, so, so, okay, so that leads the, the board, you know, so, um, maybe you know, down the road, um, depending on, you know, uh, how your business went and the level of, uh, you know, um, disturbance that the neighbors, you could always come back in front of the board if you wanted to try to rent it, have a bay to rent. You know, maybe the board would consider that, but you're in, you're in front of them for, you know, for one use, which is your main use.
Yeah.
So, um, and that use can have an office element to it, but, you know, renting it
Not a separate.
as addition to businesses, you know, so like I said, maybe if, you know, if you're, um, if the business is, um, you know, um, compatible with the neighborhood and you've, you know, you've done what you said you've done, maybe you come back in front of the board for an extended use and the board could review it at that time, wouldn't you?
So same thing with like the, you know, a place for the kids to, to work on it, that is the same thing.
Whatever, whatever you're thinking down the road, maybe, maybe something changes and you want to change, do something else. That would be a special permit.
Sure. Yeah, okay.
Fair enough. Um, can I run up to the public? You okay with that?
You were a public, any comments, concerns?
Ask question.
Your name and address, please?
Sorry, I'm pretty.
I know, Tim S. Your name and address?
Karen Miller, eighty-four Mura.
Yes.
And, um, so he's talked and, and you guys mentioned, you know, the vague of his business plan and such, but he mentioned other thirty or sixty cars or, or, or of the like. And, um, you know, does that not create a hazardous waste situation too? If you have sixty cars in a building, there are maybe old cars or leaking gas or leaking oil, we all drove back. And any of us who drove those old cars back in the day know that they leaked oil, they leaked gas. And I know that, um, you know, I don't know what I'm saying, the next sentence, so I apologize, but I, if you have like a, a auto repair or something, don't you need like special for auto repair? Um, because of that hazardous waste, um, having to do with automobiles and such. So if you have thirty or sixty vehicles with, you know, dripping oil.
So I, so I can, I can answer that for you. Um, so, um, if he would be required, I, did we have this?
We had this conversation, put in four drains.
Yeah, he, he would be required to, uh, put in a drain at the overhead doors. It's in the plumbing code, so he would have to, uh, have a drain on the inside of the building. If anything was, this, this goes with any kind of vehicle storage in a building, uh, for new buildings. But because he's, you know, at cha- a change of use, he has to comply with it as well. So it's a trough drain and it's exactly what you're getting at. It has to collect anything before it goes outside.
Oh, so does conservation have to get involved because it's so close to the water?
No, not, not unless he's going to disturb the earth outside.
Oh, and so then, um, also, so like there's a kid, my granddaughter's bus stop is right there too, right? And so we've seen some of the hair-raising events of the trucks trying to get down that street and such. And so even if someone's coming to drop off their classic vehicle or whatever, that, that's a tough term, right? With any kind of trailer, I'm not talking eighteen wheeler, I'm talking the things that haul cars and stuff. So I don't live on either one of those corners, but I've seen things that take out a fence and stuff on those corners, right? And so it, it, you know, I, I appreciate that the discussion about this is residential and it is in the middle of a neighborhood and thirty or sixty cars stored in there and that, what comes along with it, right? The mice and the cars in the middle of the winter when it's nice, warm engine and they won't be able to repair any vehicles, correct, in there?
He's not coming for repair.
Okay, so, so you know, he's saying, oh, just go in that office, like go over there, you know, you kind of like really specifically what happened, what are you going to do? Just sit in there and learn lovingly stare at your car kind of thing, you know what I'm saying, right? So it, you just kind of wonder what goes next in the middle of a neighborhood.
So, um, he did explain, you know, the nature of his business would be re- rental. So um, he did explain, you know, the nature of his business would be re- rental space, indoor storage. He would need an uh an element of an office to do that. Um, you know, he does, he would have the right to access his building whenever he needed to, you know, um but. The element of office would be to go along with the business, it wouldn't be an accessory use. It would be for that business, for him to go in and maybe it's computerized, maybe he sits in there and figures whatever. But he would have the ability to use that whenever uh he needed to use it.
A a good example, a good example of what's in the office now is all the surveillance. So there's cameras everywhere and that's a fraction of the cameras that I would have. Because when you have valuable items in there, I want people to be able to remote in and watch, like, oh, good, my car is nice and safe and taking a nap. Right there and I can see it, right?
Like daycare.
Exactly, doggy daycare, daycare, all of the above, yes.
One follow-up question, thank you so much, we have one follow-up question, so auxiliary storage usage, is there a definition for that, like? What that means, what else could be in there, I, I don't have any idea.
So it's up to the board to um, put conditions on his request. It is a special permit and they take everything into account, um and so um. The special permit, when it's written, would be uh would spell out exactly what he can, what he can can do. And and that's, that's how it would be written.
Yeah, so like he can't, I I mean, there's obvious things, flammable things and stuff like that, I just meant like. If if he decides he's gonna store food.
Like it, like it, well, I don't know if there's much food in there now.
It used to be.
There was some food in there, but um I I get what you're saying, that the building is a. The size of the building, it's it's equipped with a sprinkler system and and when you add a vehicle uh element to it. It has, the criteria goes down smaller, like um it's fifty-four hundred square feet is required for a um. Vehicle storage. If it wasn't vehicle storage, it's nine thou- it's um, it's almost nine thousand square, or seventy-five hundred square feet. He he would be allowed to do without a sprinkler, but the building is sprinkled. To your point.
And that actually has to be. Most likely raised up and improved.
The sprinkler?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be, that would go with your permit for the change.
Exactly, yeah.
Um so, you know, um the uh the amount of vehicles, um I I would think, um I don't, is there a drawing of the footprint of the warehouse?
Box, you know, it's just a square box. Rectangular box, sixty by a hundred fifty.
Yeah.
So with that, and I hate to keep bringing things up, but.
Sure.
It's, it is gross, we small building. And if you have twenty, thirty cars in there and. You know, your your customer comes out and wants his car, that's fifth in a row. Now you'd be finding all these vehicles falling out and falling back down.
Would you be talking about lips at all too or now? Um, potentially, if it made things easier, um. For the layout, potentially, yeah, the four post-car lifts to to stack them. So there's a, the model that I'm kinda going by, there's a, there's a company down in Rhode Island called Rhode Island Car Ball. And um they have a model where you actually have to give them seventy-two hours notice. So depending on how much you pay, you can go quicker, right, so seventy-two hours is the cheap rate. If you want it in forty-eight hours, you pay a little more per month, if you want it in twenty-four hours, you pay a little more per month. Uh if you want easy access to it, in other words, you have like, let's say you're gonna use it every few weeks, right? Or if you're long-term storage, you can pay a lower rate, which is the one that you're buried in the back. Um, so it 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 really depends, I'm looking at that model, uh they seem to be pretty successful. Uh as how how far is they're running their business?
But the uh the brothers need to be aware that at any point in time, you could have ten, fifteen thousand starting up, moving in and out.
Yeah, I would not wanna do that, that's too much, um. I would expect that cars are buried more than two or three deep. So I'm not gonna be having to move a million car, cause it's, it just makes it impractical for me. Um to be able to manage that, right, I I I. Like I said, I have a regular five, I got it to do every day, so this is, I need to be able to get in and get out quick and and not have to. Shuttle everything around.
So, yeah, I guess with that, um, could there be a scenario where it's like, okay, Memorial Day weekend's coming up? Everyone wants to come access their cars, cause they have like their nice convertibles or wherever, and then you have this whole onslaught of cars coming.
They all wanna bring back.
When the weather comes up, it becomes nice.
Yeah, I mean, that with something like that, again, it would be in the, in the rental contract, uh the storage contract, you you need to. Give notice, you need to be days in advance, and that's what I liked about that Rhode Island, Rhode Island Car Ball. Model is that in order to access it, again, depending on your payment rate. You have to give three, four days notice, if you want your car out on a certain day.
Same with boats, though, I mean, once it gets to the Fourth of July or whatever, then it means.
I would think the good part about this, it's by appointment, it's not a automatic thing, cause I I remember the last one, I I I think it was sure. You didn't want people just showing up, it was by appointment, you know, so um.
That's correct.
Or all of a sudden, it's not gonna rain on Memorial Day, it's not like the morning, or my car, or.
Well, you didn't give me the notice.
Yeah, I still, I still feel like, and obviously, where it meets the vote, I feel like there's a really still a lot of hypotheticals, there's a lot of unknowns. There's nothing that's definite in what your proposal is, and that that just worries me in the sense that. I think like it would be beneficial if the board knew exactly what your game plan is for that business. This is, you know, how many vehicles I want in there, these are the hours I'm thinking, this is the, you know, what I'm having inside the building, this is what could be outside. Because I just feel personally that with a lot of hypotheticals of what you may be doing. That worries me because, again, you're in a residential zone and what you may do versus what we really wanna see in that residential zone. For those resident, that's, this is only my opinion. I just think you need to fine-tune your plan for that area a little bit more. From, that's just what I would like to see, but the board can totally have a totally different opinion on that, but I think considering this is a residential zone. We need to know exactly what your game plan is for that.
Sure.
In in writing, just because I think it's fair for even the neighbors to know what's gonna be there.
How many overhead doors are there?
And Dennis, I'm still for the public.
Yes, yes.
Well, yeah, Charles Johnson, one twenty Pine Grove Ave. And what grabbed me down here is when he uh talked about uh using it for. Multiple different things.
Yep.
A plumber, you know, and uh. Some of that is backed away, and then it said renting out the office, that sort of backed away, you could have his office for his business. Renting it out to an accountant, a lawyer, doctors, uh it's gonna be a no-go type of thing. Uh, I would like to see, you know, some use of that building, it's been sitting there for five or eight years, going nowhere. And uh. The other, one thing I did bring up, and we haven't, I haven't heard it discussed, was the outside of the building. Uh, it's got, it's got a parking area and I'm sure. If somebody coming in with a trailer, probably has enough room to swing it around. Um, but is it gonna be used for outside storage? You know, I I've seen pallets out there, they, I think they had a dumpster there, uh. But is it, you know, somebody gonna come along and park their car on the outside, okay, the inside's full, uh let's park six cars outside here. So maybe you have to put a restriction on.
And that was something that came up at last was. I think it was withdrawn last September.
Yes.
Um, and one of my concerns, your harms are correct, I don't want cars stored out there. But if you've got a customer's renting a car, uh renting a spot, he comes out with his everyday car. It's gonna wind up in the parking lot.
Correct. Yeah, and and I'm, I would wanna write in the details that, you know, there might be a trailer or two parked in there, like an enclosed trailer. That kinda backed up in one corner, or there's like a spot, you know, next to the building for one, I'll say enclosed trailer, um. You know, I have no intention of making it a junkyard. Um, that is, that is absolutely not the intention, like I said, I I I wanna be a good neighbor, you know, that's that's the goal, you know, um. One here, I, you know, I I'm interested in this personally, so I I, I don't want this to be a bad thing. Um, but yeah, there there very likely could be things parked there, um.
On a temporary basis.
Yeah, the only thing that I think that would be more than a day would be, again, if there were, there was an enclosed trailer or an open trailer for a vehicle. Tucked tucked back, not sitting anywhere near the the driveway entrance, cause you need to have access to pull in and and maneuver, right?
So if I, if I'm understanding you correctly, you, this has gotta be revised, cause you also have to have outside storage.
Well, it's a parking lot.
It's lost that storage where it left the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, I can certainly put that in there, sure.
And the other thing was, you have to, you were probably gonna move and cut, so you must have access to. All the keys for all these cars, you must have a key vault or something, you can't store it unless you leave me the key.
You got it, yeah, cause I have to be, especially if you're in the back.
And yeah, I think we brought it up last year was uh repairs.
Yeah, no repairs.
You know. And I think we were, it brought, was brought up that uh doing mechanical repairs. Uh, other than maybe somebody walking in with a battery, dropping it in the car or something.
But fixing a, changing a flat tire or.
Yes, this is, I'm I'm sure, you know, when you have long-term storage, you have, you have problems, but uh. You know, I think we brought it up last year, we didn't wanna see it be a mechanical garage.
Correct, and that's not the intent.
No.
I have that at home.
So that was my concerns, is I said, when I read that line where you threw in this and then you threw in that. Oh boy, well, basically, the first, the first few lines was same thing we came to last year.
Correct.
Uh now you threw a few more things on, but uh you're, you are somewhat restricted.
Yeah, and and that's fine, I I know, uh my first time going through this process, so um. One piece of advice I got from a contractor who'd done this before is throw everything in and see what sticks, um and so I did that and. I understand a little bit better now, so I'm gonna go back, what I have in my purchase and sale agreement with Chrissy is. General warehousing of non-hazardous materials and storage of vehicles. Those are the two things that I have in my purchase and sale agreement with her, those are the only two things that. That purchase and sale agreement is binding me to as far as this process goes. Anything beyond that, that's on me and on the rest of the board, sorry. And I'll have to do that at a, at a later time, which is fine.
I'm still open to public, so. Anyone else, questions, concerns?
Um, John Lo, eighty five Grove Ave, I just said, uh, well, my main concern before was the road. Yeah, condition of the road, uh trucks that do go up and down that road in the past, uh have definitely done some damage. And uh.
Hitting things, right, like as they turn in and.
Yeah, I had one instance where a truck almost ended up in my garage, I'm at Yellow House on the corner. Uh, which corner? I'm on the uh, I'm at eighty, so I'm on the end of that street.
So where meet, where it meets the main road?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, the trucks were a night, um so as long as, you know, cars do come in on trailers, uh usually the box behind. I know that probably not any car carriers or anything. So.
Not that I can envision.
Because of that road's condition and how it's always been a disrever.
Are you on that road?
Is you, are you? I do have a secondary driveway, which a lot of.
Cause, cause I know, uh I saw the questions from the last time and there were concerns about the road and. I'll be honest, I don't know how to fix that without a road committee.
Yeah, so um, you wanna let the board ask the question, have him speak to the board and then he can ask.
Is that road actually owned by? The people saw.
I think it's owned by um. Uh, Mr. Masters, yeah, I think, yeah, so, so I don't know if that. Uh, look, I don't know if the building was there before the houses and it was, you know, it was obviously there pre-exist, you know, before. Because it's residential now, so we didn't have the zones then, so it was probably there before most of those houses, I don't know about Yaron Ave. You know, uh maybe someone predate um the building on Yaron Ave. But, you know, this building was probably there prior, prior to, I don't know.
Of course, this was built in seventy-three.
Oh, okay, so, so those houses predate this building, so how it ended up there, maybe it was a special permit, I haven't seen anything on it.
Uh, I was wondering, I read somewhere about easement, at this property. Yeah, I just wanna, it was something about easement to access the property.
I think we'll get to that.
Maybe this was, this couple was telling me the other day.
Yeah, I I don't know, uh you know, the particulars of all of that, but um, you know, I mean, we um. We're sitting here with a building built in the residential neighborhood, um I think, um I think. On Amy's, you know, Amy had put forwards about a business plan and let's take it away. And, you know, having to come back with an exact business plan, you can comment on the, you know, what you, you know, if he wants to. Uh I I would recommend that the applicant come with the, maybe a plot plan showing where he would like to store trailers in his business plan.
Sure, I can put that on this.
And um, you wanna have how many vehicles for the board to um consider and.
I can do that on a revenue basis.
Your hours and, uh you know, a written plan, just, you know, to the effect that, you know, it's a by appointment. You wanna have everything spelled out and so you can move forward with it and um and present it to the board and they can rebut it or um, you know, um maybe. You know, give you some concerns that they have to maybe reduce it or um, you know, or just maybe some general questions to you.
Sure.
And and I'm, I just be, well, we just, like just throwing everything at the wall, the ads is. No way I could grant special.
Sure, okay.
I'm only one board member, but. I'm still over the public, so.
Uh, Ralph Kittle, one thirty-one, you're on. Yeah. Um, I think you, folks have done a great job of of the question and answering. And hitting on most of the things that I had concerns about, obviously, I don't like the open nature of the request and you've addressed that fairly well. I do have concerns about it being a multi-tenanted type of building, because. When there's trash left in the parking lot or a plumber dumped something out, did that go onto this guy or that guy, it sounds like that would be a restriction and. I'm I'm pleased to hear that. I think for inside storage of vehicles, I I I, I think that is a pretty good use for the building, considering where it sits, it doesn't have a lot of, you know, street front and things like that. When I hear talking boat storage, and and I'm an auto guy as well, I own a series of motorcycles and cars. Boat storage, I never really see inside, so my concern is hearing boat storage in there, that's typically done outside and. They shrink wrap them and my big concern would be if you had a dozen boats or something, I mean, it would look. From an aesthetic standpoint, for the people on the end of the street, for people, I don't think that that would look very good, I would have concerns about the outside storage. And then the same concern that I had last time, and it sounds like that's not gonna be the case, things around doing automotive repair in there. So if it were, you know, single use, not a lot of tenants, you know, that were gonna be coming in and out of there. You know, and and you're not doing outside storage, I, that would really take care of what my concerns would be.
Thank you.
Would um, can I ask? Okay. Uh, so from the outside storage perspective, it would be really, what I envision would be a few trailers. If people wanna leave their enclosed trailer there, that's what I would envision, but I can write that off.
We need that all, not what you envision, what we want, like what you want, because envision, what you might think envision, it might be different from the board. So if you can hone that in on what that.
If you come in and say, well, you intend to store four open trails, two closed trailers and. We get a call from the neighbor that the sixteen enclosed trailer is down there, guess what?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it, I'm just gonna be honest with you, I think I'll do a story, maybe who will stick a point.
Okay.
Especially for the neighbors.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so why don't you put down the plan, like.
Yeah, I will.
And spell everything out and you can present it the next time and um.
So does this go to the next meeting now?
We actually have to vote on it. Correct.
Do you wanna first ask if there's anybody zooming that wants to speak before we do that?
Is there anybody out there on Zoom? They would like to comment, question. Liz, you've been quiet tonight, are you okay, I think um, you want to pipe in with?
No, no, I'm here, I just, I have to run to catch a train.
Okay, so we'll, we'll quick so we can get your vote, cause we need.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Are are you okay with a continuation?
Uh, yes, yeah, I am. Yes.
Um, yeah, that's what we gotta do, so we're gonna.
Well, you have your choice, you could either have them decide to vote right now on this.
Well, it sounds like they need more information regardless.
Whatever, you're just your option, vote right now, withdraw without prejudice or continue, those are pretty much your.
I would say we have to continue.
Okay, that works.
November second.
Yes.
Can I extend the motion to you to November second? Looking to continue, and we're gonna do a roll call.
Yes.
Liz? Liz, did we lose you?
Liz?
Did you hear me, I? Thank you.
I, I. No move.
Perfect.
So will we continue to November second?
Okay, okay. Um, so what I need to do is document all of what we talked about, right? Have a business plan, have all the details, have everything drawn up on the drawing. Have the business plan, have all the details, have everything drawn up, have the drawing, um, I guess my other question is, do I need to resubmit? Uh, the fee, the labels, the paperwork?
No, no, just come up with a written plan of exactly, exactly what the chairman said. And then with the hours you're looking at, and that way, when we write the decisions, and when Tim has it in his office, I'll have it in mind that. We know exactly what's gonna be there.
Perfect.
Yes.
Describe your business.
Exactly.
Indicate anything that you're proposing for the exterior, so a boy can review.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, I, I got it, that's good.
It might be nice to add a few nice things in that area where it doesn't look great now. You may wanna say, you know what, I really want this to look a little bit better, so maybe.
I gotta build up the.
But I'm just saying, it can help to add some landscaping, so the area does look better, I mean, that could definitely help with things, so, but.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you all for coming.
All we have are the minutes.
Minutes. Well, that, my speaker.
You're welcome. Haven't seen you in a long time.
You have.
And you, you actually voted for the other ones last time to have Laura just change those, and she made the changes, let's see, Brian brought it, brought it up. For June first, you wanted just the names changed, and Laura took care of that for July sixth and June first.
You remember that, too?
I don't.
You did, and you were correct, if what you wanted changed, so Laura took care of it, so June and July, Laura fixed those, and they're good to go.
With the August.
Um, I think you had, you were gonna wait and vote on June, and then July, we were making the changes, and then we have September. And then we're caught up, and those will be online.
The only thing I would say about June first is.
Yes.
And it probably doesn't matter at all, but I'm not listed in the cabinet.
We can have her put that in.
Was that one of the fixes that she was mentioning?
I think she put, though, I think he made a motion where he wasn't here, so that was, so I can have her change that, that's not a big deal at all. Um.
So, we can do this on mass or individually?
However you wanna do it.
I would move to, uh, for the. June first, July sixth, and September seventh.
Okay.
Minutes. And second. Are we gonna do the third?
Sure.
Okay, roll, roll call?
Roll call, yes. I.
Liz?
I.
Thank you.
And then, most of which are.
A motion was drawn, anyone?
Roll call?
Liz?
I. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.